The Lord and the desire of the heart of Jesus Christ our Lord and Savior. Our prayer for the rest of all who we bless in our name and bless the feet of our Jesus. Holy Father, pray first and speak out your name. Adelie, you see the peace of prayer first. Adelie, the love of this place, pray first. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. In all prayer, I will say one or two words that I would like to continue with my ministry. So today I will let... But it does... I love the way I can sit down. Very often, I'm kind of angry to make this. We are applying noises that parents sometimes do not appreciate. So, there are those who are right by their side. Don't listen to white guys, bookshops, wherever you buy pens, wherever you buy a machine, wherever you can buy belts or those things, but you can't find anything where in this place where you can buy anything and put it to your mouth. It doesn't exist. Some parents, at first, they are surprised. They said their children will die. Two and a half years have passed, nobody has died. And if our people are dying, you understand? You think it's a funny? You see that three parents, sometimes you not allow our children to go through challenges. We protect our children from all the challenges of this world. Every child that is struggling with our challenges, that child can be soft, fragile, and weak. You want a son who will replace you, but none of Oduku has a son. If you people know the first son of Oduku, you will know that he is a shadow of his father. You know that he is a nobody here. In fact, Oduku's wife is even more of Oduku's person. Oduku's wife inherited the spirit of Oduku more than Oduku's person. Because of how this song grew up. But you look at America, when America was growing up, his father was rich. His father said things for us both. He get back and decided to go into the military. His father said, "Come and get on, get on and watch him." And went to the infirmary and gave a soldier. And abandoned the world of his father. If Oduku had come to the comfort of his father's soil to the neighbors, nobody would have had him here. But he went to the infirmary and was beaten strong by all the greater people. Eventually, he goes to the banks and made his own thing. In fact, his own thing had disappeared in the suburbs beyond Africa. Today, I love so much I am not. He's not afraid so much I am not. So because I am rich, my son does not need to suffer. If my son goes to college, if anybody fucks him, I will go and fight. If my son wants anything, I give it to him. If my son says I want to change school, I will change school for him. He's a problem today. If my son says I don't like this food, I say, "Which one do you like?" I will cook it. So people will not buy cars for their children at the age of 25 because they have money. Who are going to do in the past? Go there, money. Peter Obi has two children, one a girl, one a boy.
One boy.
And insisted he was not going to buy car for any of them, that these children should buy their own cars. The cheapest thing in the world is for Peter to buy car. He can get a very big Mercedes to his son on a wedding day. But he provided opportunities by... Our duty is not to prepare the road for the children, but to prepare the children for the road. He will go there, who are going to go to school? He will provide a better education for your child. Give him the best opportunity, expose him to the best opportunity, make him to have, meet people. So that he will have a place to stand on, to build his own life. The worst thing you can do for a child is to deny him opportunities. But over and over giving the child opportunity, any other thing you are doing is destroying the child. I quarrel with parents who come here to take permission for their son. A parent called me this morning and said, "Hey, my son has an ulcer. He reacts to beans. And because he reacts to beans, I have been calling you." I told him, "Man, bro, I will give your son five flashes for calling you to complain that he reacts to the beans." Your son should be able to solve his own problem. Your son should be able to go to the father's Christmas office. And face the person by man to man, eye to eye, and say to the person about that, "I have problem. Your son is dying." If your son cannot do it now, 10 years to come, he will not be able to do it. Teach your son to be independent. We are raising an over-dependent generation. Why will your son not be able to solve his own problem? Do you know why when you go to Europe, when they have children, in the room of their children, they have a lot of toys? Different category of toys. And some of the toys look like a pyramid. And a little child of two years old is climbing the pyramid in the room, they'll put foam everywhere. So if the child climbs and falls, it falls in the foam, but they will allow the child to climb that pyramid. And children are taught to face challenges. We came here this year with 250 JESWAN. One boy from Nostick, every day he will cry, calling his mother. His mother came here four times. Eventually, I called the boy by office and said, "Do you want to go back to your mother's room?" The boy said, "Yes." Meanwhile, other children of his age, in the same class, are happy jumping about. But this particular child is unable to stay here. I called the woman and said, "This is one who have created. You have to find a way to save this woman. This lady will save you for him and you know, I will help you for you. I will give you things to come from home. So that she shall walk from here and see whether he can come out of being a baby." So you see, this woman, the in and out of the, without problems, has raised her as a good young child. The problem is that parents don't have a mission. Many parents are very good to learn how to direct. My charity is on youth development. So we taught him a lot of psychology of human development. And my talk for him is on how to create children. So when I came here, I began to say to the parents, "No, this cannot continue." They said, "No." I said, "No." I'm no part of this. I study, I prepare for this. This is my area of expertise. They said, "No, our children will die." I said, "Wait, after 10 years if they die, I will decide." This is the third year we're having, nobody has died. It's not only the same protein. And now, the dog is with you, so you cannot eat protein after protein. But I will provide this. And I went for the beach, they come to look at the smaller one, that has a higher quality of protein. And in their menu, your house, their menu is 60% protein because of their age. Or they cannot receive here and take the challenges and afford it for this. The way they ask, "Why do you ask the father?" So that they can succeed. For father, they are not using wine. When they get married, they cannot have patience, they will divorce. The cases of divorce is increasing. A woman and a man, we are different. When you have a wife, understand that a woman is different from a man. And be patient with the woman. Because they understand her. Okay, I'm a chopper. You always make me one, I'm a chopper. Oh, oh my God. You understand? If any, if you do not have a person. They do say, "Father, why?" "A man who cares, I don't mind." "A man who cares, yes, I don't mind." Some people don't know how to manage conflict. But from our training, I know that there's a local part of life. I can quarrel with you for one week. Why is it? I'm not one week, I don't know, I guess, yeah, nah. In the next two, three weeks, no, no, I am not one week. But I don't manage so well, I don't give it. But I don't manage conflict, nature, they say, "Oh, I don't give it." So often, we hear from a man, a relationship with this ago, we don't love each other anymore. We should go apart, our separate ways. Because he has separate ways, but after one year, can't go back, ex, you can't go back. He definitely want this, ex, yeah. Even ex-girlfriend, they follow him, they follow her, ex. You can't know him and ex of one way. Only about that, again, I don't know. I will go to another area for one week, one to one. Want to tell the time we heal the wound and then take to normal life. I don't know who can manage it. Time we heal it. You will get used to staying without, only around. That's life. But I don't mind, I consider you, if any, nah. And don't like, I don't want to, emotional intelligence. So the last thing, I consider the moment, frustration. Where is it, man? There is a minimum frustration that is necessary for quality person. Even if I is, when I travel, I go, I have a high degree. When I travel, I have a high degree. Only about one man, I don't know, I don't care, big kid. Look, I'm big kid, it's a million. In the way, yeah. Oh, yeah, it's good. Who are there, yeah? One, one year, there, yeah. One, one year, come on, yeah, there, yeah. The whole family of father, big kid, ever come, I didn't, I didn't. Now, you can finish with J S three, yeah, yeah. Then, no, I go S S one, yeah, yeah. Because now, I go, I consider J S three, look, I'm not about to go to Lagos. See, see, father's school, I don't want to. You can wait, yeah, 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 yeah. But I don't mind, I think, so, I don't want to see Casey. I want to know, what did you show us with C K C? No, it's not, I don't see, it's a college school, yeah, yeah. The boy, he never entranced with S S one, they don't know, it's impossible. And man, I look, I don't, I want, yeah. Now, I can actually see Casey, whether he likes it or not. Ever, no, when they entranced with S S one, I love them, for the boy. The boy, no, always, I love them. Ever, I don't know, when they, that entrance. Oh, no, in classroom, he got, I from my back, I jump ahead. So, a lot of, of the children here, they get always in France, London. Even, yeah, I see the parents, I will let go, if I want, they travel in school, I don't see that. Can you practice, yeah, yeah, yeah? The parents, it's a local, I see, okay. No, I won't voice, Russia, yeah, yeah, yeah. Now, Russia, I go to school, I go, I say, I repeat, S S two. Go finish S S three in a C K C. But the boy, yeah, nah, nah, nah. The reason, the parents say, "But your father, he is, he go, he go, he go, he went too much." Now, I drop, he, I want to, he want to. So now, I don't mind, I want to, he go. Now, he, he go, he go, he go.
I'm not trying.
I go, yeah, I go, yeah.
I'm not trying.
I come on, but I, yeah, yeah. Now, the greatest mistake, I remember, for my Belarus, Dariel. So these things happen. Frustration go to the man, you know. Because two days in my, you know, they go there, you know. You are bored, you are. You are bored, say, you are, yeah. But I get that, you are bored. After one month, you go, you are bored. And they believe in that, I from my daughter, yeah, yeah, yeah. You say, I go, I say, my father, I get that, I go, maybe, I appreciate the decision of this parents. I get that, I go, maybe, I appreciate. Say, my, I say, father, I have seen lies. But I try, but I fall, yeah, I fall, no. 60 years, boy. 60 years, but I fall.
Yeah, I'm 68.
Yeah, we say, I go, she, I go, I go. Well, yeah, I'm going to, I can, yes, I'm going, yeah. Get to, I'm okay.
I fall in a 60 years.
I'm okay. Fall, I go, I miss, I fall.
And we root by there, and they fought. They fought. Nandia Zikio was in the ship for one month to go to UK. There was no aeroplane to fly. And they suffered, and they were strong men. And they, they, they received, they took leadership from the hands of the colonial masters. And these tough men began to create the new Africa. And then they discovered oil. And there was easy times created by tough men. Tough men who were products of difficult times. Then they created easy times because of their sacrifices. Nigeria became better. And Shagari, and Bouari, and Bangira, and all those men came in and jumped on top of the easy time. And then easy time created weak men. And those weak men created the difficult times we are in today. Because Nigeria is not supposed to be poor. Nigeria is not supposed to be, to be suffering. We are blessed. But what we are suffering is not just bad leadership. It's a whole complex reality of people who are not well-prepared for the duty, job of nation building. People who just came to eat, to shop. And they created difficult. Take this as a example. Kessa Siego, Nebo Ego, I went to a national school. So why I don't have that kind of experience? Can this difficult time produce to Asia tough men of the next cycle? And in CKC, I pledge that in ten years of staying here, I will hope to produce 10,000 strong men who will go into society.
Father, uh, really, you are a good man. Uh, just like I said, it is that day, it has not just happened. And we need your left, your right, and I'm happy you are recording for our people who are not here. And of the almost 18 members are in Zoom, watching you. You are welcome. Uh, we have been packed so much, so much. Uh, but we do see a watching place, CKC, after, as you see, we stand up.
Three cheers for CKC, CKC. Three cheers for CKC, CKC. Many famous are called it lasts forever. Three cheers for CKC, CKC. Our colors are white and blue, white and blue. Our colors are white and blue, white and blue. Many famous are called it lasts forever. Three cheers for CKC, CKC.
Up CKC.
Up CKC.
Up CKC.
Up CKC.
Up CKC.
Up CKC.
Primus.
Inter Paris.
Bonitas.
Dispenas. Sientia. Thank you, Father.
Father, if I could be free, I would like to ask you a question. Um, even when I was in, when I was in school, I...
How about people can see there?
I, I, this was not my first school. My first school was Madiroth, Junior Grade 2 of the world. This is my other primary school. So finally, I left my access to CKC. This is where I come. So why I'm asking you to use that? My second son is Madiroth. Of course, he's a good boy. From what I'm seeing, my last son is still in CKC. Because CKC, when we were actually coming from the heart. But from what I'm seeing now, CKC of the children's family inside this school is a big difference. But from what I'm seeing, the reforms of actually that our kids in the schools. Father, you are one of the people, for what have I told students of CKC? Is there any insecurities that they reach to our children?
For admission?
Yes, for the admission. Not, not only the admission, but our life. Like the school fees and everything like that. Please, if you can explain to us, it's very special, thank you.
You meditated, you took the exam, you passed, you suffered. You went through the dark days, even with bad boys, you were able to survive. Now you have a son. Your son is about to go to college. Do you want the child to be treated with a special treatment? Special treatment that you did not receive, that made you the man you are. That made you strong, that made you survive in the business war. Everybody is equal, not because we don't recognize old boys, but because they want those children to be like their old boy father.
More than them.
And even better than them. If we begin to parent them because their fathers still here, their father will know the part of them, they'll fit up. Then coming to admission, sometimes an alumni can be considered if his son passed the exam but did not get off the top of the mark. The school feels CKC is even in need of money. If you, if you begin to say, okay, this person is a son of a good boy, you should pay less. The money they're paying is not even enough. I tell you, those sense of honesty and sincerity. The standard of the school, the great, great, professional grade, and it is still this way. It has been, it's all about, it's all about the law. What are you talking about? It's the same right now. If they open this place, they didn't belong to that place. They were not there anyway, because they didn't, it's already decided. You know, when you take your child, it's lost. You know, and they're, they're just a must-try, and you're giving this to me, and I go, it will be this type of thing. So, Father, we, we want to listen more to them. We want to hear you greatly. Uh, as I said, they, they participate in the war and they are in the midst of CKC. It will carry more of us and from 30 times, they have moved above. Professionally.
Questions on family laws, social contracts, relationships and domestic violence. If you are concerned, you can, you can WhatsApp and the online phone message. You know that domestic violence is horrible. Wife killing husband, husband killing wife. Why is that happening every day? So, we are very concerned about ourselves. I will not make a difference to that out of domestic violence. So, very sorry for this. So, family laws. We study, funding. The laws that are applicable in family. You need to know those laws. You need to know checks and balance. You need to know what you need to do. You need to know your rights and your privileges in family as a man, your wife as a woman. So, you have protection of family laws. The fatality of children and daughters. Right, very important. The social contracts. Social contract is also a fusion in family. The contract between husband and wife with grandparents and children. It's called a social contract. Social contract in law is impossible. Because when you produce a product, a double number affects, you can pay fifty thousand. As a person, you can't stop it. Despite this contract, despite this social contract, it's impossible in a long term. Or you should have the right. You don't make it, just like the, uh, uh, if you don't think, hello, promise the doctor of your, not from her, that whatever you ask, I'll give it to you. And as the head of the department, I'll give it to you. If it's a social contract, heaven forbid, you know I can't give it to you. You, you can't stop it. So, when you make a contract, social contract, and the fact that that contract is not what's making, you can do what you have to try. Then, you are off. So, this is about, we can all find it. Find it, let's show on what's on that. What's on that is why our business is very busy. We don't know that for the business of somebody, there must be an agreement, mutual agreement. If it is all right, somebody should be here soon as best. But the best agreement is mutual. Yes, it's shaped to go to the, the, the give back and take. And then, when the business people provide to pay the money, it's your giving back, not with cash. I have a business company, I gave you money, they, they are giving. They have brought it down to a class line. They deny it totally, but I did not pay you. So, when the case was brought up, I now brought my statement of account. And it was left, was both in reality. It was a price. So, what I'm saying is, no, some, some, somehow, I don't pay cash, I don't, that's how. That person is a thief that cannot be there. Can't beat it. So, if you cannot put up, put up, put right on an image to grow the business, make sure that every plant and all is in form of class law. Somebody was saying that, if you have any business with somebody. Unfortunately, that particular day, that particular day, there was a class law and they come asking, why did this person pay this money to you? And what do you want? So, let's talk the lesson of business. You bet, 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 bet share. Uh, what experience I have had, and with that experience, we back to another place. Never has, uh, experience is, uh, the disharmony. Experience is the disharmony. And now, an interactive session. And interactive session, we are, everybody will say if you, and you are the required. K K will say, careful what you are doing. Members allow you to do your business. For what the boy in your family, I will say, I've looked at all these discussions, I want to go into family. Maybe there is somebody who is in the family business, correct? And they tell me, for what the boy in your family, this is what I have to do. For what the boy in your family business, I can tell you, you said, you have to do this before you can do it. Start, the point of having progress, that's where. So, I told you, it's the goal, I spoke, and then, you listen. A Saturday, a day. A day. Yeah? Yeah? Saturday. He gave us something. He thought. On my Saturday, Saturday, we make entertainment. Uh, celebration of entertainment. We do some jokes, we design the, at level of the industry. So, we can create a story, a character story. We can break people's knowledge. So, coming maybe, all the way to make a relief. We can, that's the house. I am sure, which is to have one day to Friday. So, that is for Saturday, that's a fact. Yes, uh, oh, he can't know. We can, we can celebrate. We didn't make the happy from one day to Friday. We believe the traitors, we love Saturday. That is what I'm thinking. If the, if the cars, I need what, or any one every day. And I say, and I say, they, 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 they. We celebrate end of every Saturday. And celebrate every, every property. You understand what I'm saying? Uh, so, we can observe the element from Monday, from Sunday to Friday, on the birthday service, we celebrate that Saturday. We have to look at our, if it's okay, adopt it. There's something. What I'm saying. Some days, of God, this was, wishing of God of God, a prayer by a Christian. A Christian writer, from a church. One or two persons, they are friends. So, these are the organs of the league. They are a sport, a sport shop. We need to respond from everybody. Perhaps, it's what we agree that are we meeting in the meetings. What I just said is the proposal. Are you, are you to me? So, if the adopted, where it is, we go. Make any amendment, it will be amended. It's a question, yeah. There is a problem, might be one, I mean. It is a.
Very well. For example, I need to, you know, education, teacher, many of us. Um, if we go to third, we say, do one, a new direction. Because what we see more, more in our online, uh, food, is, of, like, things like this. Who wants that? But this, uh, is a good one. You want, what, 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 what? Everything is also, to that we are formed. Yes, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm. To that, uh, we are formed in the activities. And what, what is happening in the, uh, uh, something to begin with, also. If the one you know, not only is to pray, but also into, into solar. I'm also into solar, and I'm also into Spanish. So, I have three things that I can teach. So, when the time comes, if you do better on me, I will respect you.
Take it, take it, let me, let me, oh yeah, go on.
Hi, honourable members. I want this, uh, new program. I will bring in our international community.
Thank you. Look at there, look at there, yeah, yeah. So, when I look, I look, I look, I see, you know, who is here, you know? So, when I look, I see, so, love, I know, I know. I have to say, I do see, I do see, I get the bond. No, 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 we're not for the same. We will be three, you know? Can we come back, no, see ya? You may know, see, you know, yeah, yeah.
The Secretary of the State, our Minister, the President of the Assembly, the members, as we did, our Secretary, our Deputy Secretary, and I started to say today, there are no more people to start from, not from there. After long time, we have Constitution Committee Committee. We also have the Welfare Committee. And we have Business and Investment Committee. So we, let us see, let us have the Constitution Committee. Okay, in the Constitution Committee, we have President Obama, we have President Aneka, we have Obyorun President, we have, we have Martin, we have Martin, is the two more there? We have Chief of Defense. A difficult question.
I nominated my ex-wife in this morning as Secretary. Then by that, I remember, I was sharing my position on it, thank you.
In this, in this context, our leader, President Aneka and Chairman, most of Martin, Eric, and Ochi, are the Secretary, thank you. My Lord, from the morning, as the President of our Sancho, he is here. I have permission, this is ridiculous, and the rest of the committee. Today, we are, we are, we are going to go to 2020. So, we can, George, is more of this way, to invite you. We should go to the right one, and we need to get Chairman. We should go and we need to get Chairman, and also, we are saying. We are George, so. And my, on things, we, we are impressed on Obama, on things they will do, I would say, and we will be delighted. Let me show, and, and, who will do the meeting, and Secretary, and this person?
Want to give to Secretary, but Secretary, you, you are not, you are not for very many.
Go back to the, move back to old one, after the two left.
President, the better, the better.
Huh? Huh? Go back again, let's see, go back again. Okay, this is, these are the good one here. So, you may, you may do this.
So, we, we will point to the others. As an active Secretary of the committee, we are doing the.
I don't know, yeah. I don't hear you. You don't, you don't want to destroy. Make your hands, make your hands.
So, the truth is that, eh, we, we should, we cannot leave this, this, this committee without, with Secretary. A functional Secretary. We cannot leave, leave without a functional Secretary.
Okay, go on.
Okay, we cannot leave this committee, we, we have accept on the job, appoint the Chairman. That's all, but we cannot leave them without functional Secretary. They will now appoint the temporary Secretary, in person of, to, to measure all this. To be the temporary Secretary of the Business and Investment Committee. They will now meet, appoint the Chairman.
He is authorized to create a group for them.
Now, we please authorize to create a group, for, for them, and get all of them aboard, then they can now nominate the Chairman. They should now go, go back to the drawing board and design things we can do as, as a group, and as individual. If any of us need any, need, eh, business advice in anywhere, it is their job to do that. So we hereby activate them and give them the authority to function, thank you. The agenda we have is, acceptance, acceptance of the P R O.
That's tough for Donald P R O.
During the last AG, our P R O, in the personal of Marcel Olubico, tendered a resignation letter citing that there is no harm in being a part of executive and also be our auditor. Eh, actually, he has not been performing in any of those roles. So today, we hereby accept his resignation as our P R O. As the average. So we, at this one junction, we throw open the post of P R O. We will conduct a quick election for the post of P R O. We need a P R O that is active, we need a P R O that is vibrant, that can be able to keep our forum active. So now, we should nominate and vote for a P R O, thank you.
Martin.
Huh? No.
Emmanuel Goldsah, he's nominating S F V.
Ah, Obyorun President, he's nominated Chris Olivo.
Then, in annual dues, Chris Olivo has paid 2017 only. S F V has not paid anyone, God.
Just registered.
Just registration.
Automatic disqualification, who we accept this.
Speak loud, let them hear you.
As.
Don't speak loud, ah, nah.
As S F V wants to be just a registered member, not paid any annual dues, the automatic disqualification, the contest, that Chris Olivo, having paid one of the annual dues to this 2017, you know, is now will take the position. But it's okay.
Are we to call it the idea? Are we taking the idea, are we to call it the idea?
I don't think you have it, it's hard to argue on that. It's a total disqualification, because that dues permits who see the other member.
Well, he says something, follow the idea.
Okay, okay, look, look at it.
Nah, 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 come on.
Everybody should look at it, at its own.
Yeah, yeah.
But I didn't, I'm not, I'm not kicking that guarantee.
That's what I'm saying.
I just said that point now, that, that, that can be. So what, 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 what project, the ideas, we to, so all of us, we can't compare the idea. We can't compare the cost.
Yes. Okay, now, is there any objection on this emotion?
No objection.
So the information available to us, eh, S F V one G has not paid any dues. So, and they, 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 that disqualifies me. On, on, on that, we hereby elect Chris Olivo to be our P R O. The Secretary will now, the Secretary of the State, will now update him on the things he is supposed to do and make sure he is active, thank you. Brief, brief speech from the chapter's president, from the chapter's Chairman. So, we have the Chairman of the chapter here. Eh, Kivamumba, please, is there anything you want to tell us?
Some might not tag, they will start, it's not easy. But we thank God and we also thank you. Um, gathering people is not easy, at least you can also witness what happened today. In the area of, eh, building on the chapter, it takes a lot of work to do. I knew I started it and, eh, my boss goes, I was still, it's a great time to go into details as to why people are not forthcoming. Leadership is not easy. Eh, what really empowers the people or the leaders to do more is when there's always a quick response to whatever call you are making. So, I only applaud people, this is just a gathering of, eh, eh, schoolmates. We can derive more from this, just that people are not necessarily seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. By the time they start seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, which I know you have every capability and God has allowed you on that side to move, you know, the class forward. I know at the end of the day, there will be a great turnaround. So, I'm only pledging I will do my best. It has not been easy all this while. I will add more effort and then see that, um, we consolidate, we build more foundation on what we are doing in this on Shabrush. I know also that there are still aggrieved members, aggrieved members. That is also an important part, which I know that, um, you have, eh, started working towards that, how to reconcile. Along the line, one or two things must have happened, but we don't have to dwell in the past. What do we do to move this association forward, that is what matters. Eh, probably, if you ask one or two people to say something, they might say something that may not agree with you. We have to leave that behind. We have to leave behind and then see how we can make amends as to where we made mistakes. You understand, because nobody's there, know it all. But I like your style, in social manner that you went to the roots to find out what was those grievances all about. So, I think by the time you gather your facts together and then work towards that, there will be a great achievement as to kind of, this is what the way we started. At least, you can remember how we started this association, eh, with a great temple. If maybe we had moved that temple without all these grievances, honestly, we would have known where, where, where we might have been by now. But I thank, eh, the former president, he tried by himself to, and I'm thanking you as well, because we took it to another height, which, eh, I never expected. So I don't have more to say, only to say goodness to you, understand, thank you very much.
The comrade Ikendla Numbaa had just spoken, the Chairman on each chapter, 1999 of C K C, you have read him.
So, and that was.
The regent.
Yes, and movement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I have to tell you what I'm grateful, eh, I have to commend our presentes for this wonderful, amazing. In fact, what I've seen here so far, I think, eh, they actually did a lot of sacrifice to put up this, because to do anything that will also carry our high in Diaspora and other places are also along, is not something that, eh, does, does, does like, eh, a, a small thing. So I have to thank them for that. Eh, why I want to take a little bit of my time is because I should have been here early and also speak on, on one or two things. But I wouldn't want to go back to those things. Eh, I want to stand on existing rules of law and also ask because of the issue I'm telling, why we have to discuss concerning the, for, the current Secretary of this association. I want to ask, because I wouldn't know the point we have to add. If, eh, what we are discussing is part of the agenda of the meeting or if it's coming as an A O B, so that I will know how to react to it. So if it's part of the agenda, I want to discuss it like an agenda raised in the meeting. But it happens to be on, on an A O B, which means that there is something that has to be discussed in our lecture that. But if it's part of the agenda, I want to put in my next position. So I want to ask, so I'll do the discussion.
Okay, we are, we are, we are, we are, we are agenda. We are presumably now to get what we.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
General.
So, I don't think it's something we need to, eh, discuss.
So that was why, yeah, yeah.
So, if that is the case, I would suggest I will refer you to next meeting. Here we deliberate very well on it, eh, but I think it's a sensitive matter that we need to talk more on.
Before you, I didn't hear you.
I say it's a sensitive matter.
No, you said before you, next.
Our next meeting.
Or executive meeting, you can, can, can you try and.
No, it should be, it's a sensitive matter, it's not an executive issue. I say secretary position is a serious, eh, position and, eh, that, eh, every decision we are going to be taking about that has to be done on a, on a general meeting, something, or maybe our annual general meeting, or even a gathering like this that also sleep as a general meeting. So that is why I say, this school doesn't have the power to remove the secretary. They're not, so I'm not trying to, eh, kind of, eh, read our position towards, but that is what I know and I can do. But in all, eh, like I say, I wouldn't want to go more into it. Eh, let me just add a little bit to what I wanted to say here today. One, one thing I know for sure is that, eh, our old boy association has come to stay. Inasmuch as this, we know we are facing some challenges, when it has to do with a lot of commitment to what we are doing, a lot of us here are not actually doing it. Eh, I wouldn't say that, eh, it's because maybe they don't have the time. Because I think, eh, it's something that you value, something that you cherish, that you bring out your time to put into. And, eh, if I should move all the way from where it to come to this meeting today, it shows that I value this meeting and also the association. So what I think is this, we need to charge our guys to be more committed to what we are doing. I was privileged to be here about three days ago when we went to see the principal for this meeting. And I was able to descend, here the principal is going to, the guy is two months. And, eh, his plans for this school is also wonderful. And I think, eh, we have made mention about old boys that are really trying and doing their best to also give back to their mother. And that is why we are here. So I have to commend our presentes course, like I have charged them before now during our, our last AG. We really need to carry a lot of people along. To me, I still believe there are some, some of our old guys that have refused to pay into what we are doing, maybe because they agreed in one way or the other. But there is no way you know what actually is their grievance if, eh, we don't, eh, reach out to them. Eh, I made mention of some people like, eh, eh, this guy in Abuja, that is, eh, Omele. Eh, Omele, I say we need to reach out to him. It's important we find out why he's like not committing himself again the way he needs to. I made mention of somebody like, eh, I'm happy he's here today. I mean, eh, Chairman Godneten Anambara Asaba Zone, who is Ikendla Numbaa. Eh, at the point, I know what, what I did in terms of talking and other things, talking to him and other things for him to pay to, to what we are doing. But I still believe there are one way or the other, or some here, and that he is not really happy about what we are doing or what we've done. So we also need to come close to that and know exactly what's involved. Like I keep saying again, um, the Anambara, Anambara Asaba, or the Chasaba Zone is the pioneer zone of this association. And I wouldn't know why we should just be dragging everything back. We need to ginger the kind thing. The other day, I was, I tried to, a kind of, count the numbers of our old boys here in Olisha and these are barrels, I counted up to 27 and I'm still counting. What remains is that we have a number and that number is something that we can work on and also get something out of it. My able priest, though, I will want you to look into this. Inasmuch as this, there are some other people that are claiming to have one of the challenges when it has to do with, of, eh, like calling it, eh, chance, or, yes, free time. Eh, I don't think you will just devote a free time to this. Put it into your agenda and make it a priority so that it will also, kind of, work out for you. So in general, I want to thank our guys in Diaspora, but I also want to tell them that they know they try, you know, and they will hide my home. Eh, because they are there and I, 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 while, I, while I was on my way coming to this meeting, I joined through the Zoom link. And I noticed that, eh, I didn't see only any of them join the meeting from the Zoom link. Eh, I wouldn't know the time difference for, in, to, as in where they are at the moment compared to what we have here now here in Nigeria. But no matter what, I think, eh, the publicity of this meeting has been ready or publicized for up to like a moon now, or if I'm not mistaken. So they should have, okay, actually, I was like, I remember, joined. He's just the one in Diaspora that I, I let her find, joined during on the, through the Zoom link. So, why, that is why I said, you know, they try. So they need to encourage us, they need to encourage us, we need to be encouraged. Let's join high together and move this association forward. Eh, 1998, they are doing wonderfully well, 1999 are doing wonderfully well, 1997 also are doing wonderfully well. These are our geniuses, I wouldn't know why we should not so do well. Eh, I want to stop here and also give the floor for that to talk. I want to commend this course once more and I want to also commend our able priest apostle. The guy that is bringing this life to you guys everywhere you are across the globe. Eh, it's not a small thing, I have to commend him for this commitment. He has always been there, on and on. So I thank you and I will thank my able priest though once more. Thank you for this time and, eh, may God bless all of us. I want my say, monitor, Susina, Dier, Primo, thank you very much.
Our priest, Emelitis.
Okay, now, thank you very much, my Emelitis.
That is not a strong. Our old boy, our, our sex, our boy.
Our sex. I said, okay, so when he gave to me, I was playing, you know, just like, like, you know, as, and then, I didn't, I, I, I'm not in order. You don't want to be so short, but you know, I, I, I can say. So, I, I thought, there might be, like, I, I, I believe in sort of, because I, because I, because I, we have to, it's a slight advantage. But it has to look into the educational of our mother. Our family, they go there, they are there. It might, it might take a bit, but the way it's, you know, because of what we do, we do all the best we can. So, I would like, second one, I, I, I thought, that, that I said about this.
See, you could do, you could do.
By it was special, right? It was, I would be that, I would come and do, of character, it was, it was, it was, it was.
That I would be a relationship.
Never had a relationship. So, easier with us. And there here, there is a place to both looking at, from the, from the, from the issue of us. So I, I, I think about what I, what you are doing.
I would say, Primus. Primus, I promise. Sure, I'm happy to see you. For some of us, I've also seen you in thirty years, twenty years. With them girls, right? They know, they, 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 they tell me, you are, you're from last time. And then, that one, that one, you know. So we are happy to see you. We are very, very happy to see you. The greatest of you, right? It's like, oh, Monday, yeah.
Oh, no, it, it may have been that. That's what it's true. It is, it is a plan. After six, after four, I don't know. It's your boy, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not. Yeah, but I don't know.